And we are going to do the flag salute everybody, so you can do it in your own homes, we'll do it here.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if we could have a moment of silence, please remember all the people in our country who are suffering at this time and what each person's going through, each district in town, and please remember them in your thoughts and prayers. Please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Republic which stands nation under God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Open Public Meeting Act, and according to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Times, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, and Cable Vision of Warwick, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolutions were provided to all local media, town halls, township libraries, and all district schools. Due to the public health emergency in the state of New Jersey as declared in the Executive Order 103, the board will be suspending its normal meeting procedures this evening and conducting a virtual meeting. Directions for accessing the virtual public meeting were posted on the district's website, We very much welcome input from the public, because this is a virtual meeting. Public comment will be handled as follows. You can call 973-697-5700, extension 4709. This is Francisco, roll call please.
This is Romeo. This is Romeo.
Sorry.
It's in the background. Mr. Conklin. This is Dwyer. This is Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Greeno. This is Fritz.
Here.
Mr. Shinsky.
Here.
Mr. Stillman.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
A motion that I need to make a motion, be it resolved that the West Milford Township Board of Education hereby approves the suspension of its normal meeting procedures pursuant to Bylaw 131, authorizes this meeting to be conducted as a virtual meeting as described in the statement of public notice due to the public health emergency declared in Executive Order 103. I need a second for that motion.
I'll say.
Jason? All those in favor, oh, we're going to do a roll call on this.
This is Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Greeno.
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Oshinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Conklin. Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yeah. Dr. Anamon, your report?
Oh, yes. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, board members. Good evening, community members who are watching at home. We just have a couple of brief updates tonight. Number one, as you know, school is closed until Thursday, April 9th. There is some talk about a longer closing coming from the governor or coming from the state. We're certainly listening, but we don't have anything concrete yet. So right now, all we know is that school is closed until Thursday, April 9th. Spring break begins the following day, at which point we're off the following weekend. So this could be extended into April or not, we're not sure, but right now, we're just closing. Second of all, or secondly, we are, we have developed some continuity of operations plans with our administrators, and they are working on similar plans for their teachers. So in the event one or more administrator goes down, we have two people who are backing them up, so to speak. So if the principal of one school goes down, the workload would fall to a second principal or a third principal, depending on who is available. And the same thing is for the supervisors, where they'll be covering each other's departments moving forward. And I've asked the principals and supervisors to develop a similar plan for their classroom. For example, if a third grade teacher at one school gets ill, the other third grade teacher can continue lesson planning for both classes. Won't be a perfect match, but it's better having one class with nobody there. So we are developing those plans, and we are anticipating some of our staff members becoming sick with COVID, admins, teachers across the board. So this thing is spreading, it's going to get worse before it gets better. We're doing our best to mitigate ahead of time. And the last piece just came out today, Governor Murphy announced that he is applying to the federal government for a one-year waiver on standardized testing, which is the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, which are administered every year. Next month, it would be administered. And obviously, we're in no place to be worrying about that now. So it's not official yet, however, the governor was very confident that his waiver application would be approved by the federal government. So we're looking forward to that. It's, in essence, one less thing to worry about during this pandemic, and we're thankful for his leadership. So does any board member have any questions?
Just thank you for everything you've been doing, Alex. Our district is way ahead of the curve, and I put that all on you. Thank you and your team, because you all were on top of it. Terry, you have something?
Yes, Alex, I, you know, I just want to piggyback on what Linda said. I know you had a lot of resistance from the county when you decided to close, and I respect you for standing up for that, and you've just done a remarkable job. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. And I think.
Courtney, you have something?
Same thing. As a teacher myself, Dr. Anamon, I cannot thank you enough for preparing our community, being proactive, getting the teachers ready, which then got our students ready as well. I would like to talk about Flex Friday, but I'm not sure if it's appropriate to talk now or after Mr. Novak speaks.
Yes, maybe right after, I think Mr. Novak's going to update the board and the community about Flex Fridays. So we'll hold that thought for a minute or two.
Got it, absolutely.
Thank you again, Alex.
Thank you.
Dan?
Okay, I'm ready. Everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, so we're just following up with what Dr. Anamon was talking about. And I agree with your sentiment. We, I think as a district, we've really, you know, jumped out ahead of this. Our staff has been absolutely committed to this. We basically reinvented the profession overnight, and we continue to evolve. One of the things I wanted to update the board on is the initiative that we launched yesterday through the principal messages in regard to, I guess, now being called a Flex Friday. What we saw with some community feedback, staff feedback, the, I guess, overwhelming nature of the first week at home with the kids, you know, parents working from home. We have a wide variety of, you know, different needs in the community between people who are, I mean, currently out of work already, and those people who are needing to, you know, homeschool their kids with no prior, you know, background other than working on them with homework, working with their students with homework. So we saw a need to relax a little bit, but still stay mindful of the, of our goals. And that is to continue, you know, life is going to go on, and education at West Milford is going to continue. So we've, we've put this practice in place on Friday. Where students who've been struggling with the four days of content, we've put in the Friday as a, as a catch-up sort of day, as an individual needs day. You know, we've worked a lot of, we've worked very hard on differentiated instruction over the years, and I think Friday fits those needs. Our teachers are still going to be available, but what we've seen and heard from the community is that students are behind in a lot of ways, and they need that time to catch up. What we also have is the need for our staff to have the time to be, be receiving professional development, to tinker with these new online tools. I mean, we're, I guess, we're reinventing the profession. So we are, we've got a great, great team of staff members and administrators who are sharing resources, sharing videos, sharing best practice with what they've seen to be successful. And we see this growing every, every day. So our hope with Friday is that we're going to take it down a notch for our community. Students are still going to be involved with their studies, they just, they just have an extra day to work on all those things. I think, I think our staff was eager to, to rise to the occasion and prescribe education for these two weeks. And I think we may have overshot a little bit with, with how much we put out there. So we're providing that time, providing our staff members time to learn and grow. And we're going to see how it goes until, until spring break. You know, it's between now and then, it's, I think it's only two more Fridays after, after this one. You know, with Good Friday not, not being a scheduled school day anyway. So we're, we're proud of it. We, we started talking about it, I guess, last week with the initial feedback coming in. And then we took a few days to, to talk and then see, see the landscape of what was going on. And as we were mulling it over, we started seeing letters from other districts being floated around, how they were seeing similar things. I know there's a number of school districts who have also moved to this, this type of model. So I think we were right on track with what we were talking about. And, and again, kudos to our staff for making this all work, and hopefully, this can take everyone's blood pressure down a little bit.
Well, I want to thank you, Dan. I know that you've been instrumental in helping the teachers and the administrators and what they're doing. And I thank you for what you're, you're doing for our staff and our students. The district is definitely on track, and I, hearing from different parents out there, that they were very excited that they had a plan where they knew family and friends who were just kind of thrown into it, but that we had a plan for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we're proud of it, I think. And I, I guess, said it's going to evolve. You know, we don't really know the future of this and how long this is going to be. But when we start really getting into the new content and, and preparing kids for next year and beyond, you know, our staff is, they know they're going to have to revolve in this too, so, so I think we're, we're ready.
Courtney?
Is the Flex Friday just for elementary schools or middle school and high school as well?
It is a district-wide initiative. All, all the principals put it in there. Dr. Anamon has our principals doing a daily reminder to their school community. So we drafted some language yesterday, and it was included in every principal's honeywell to their local, to their own school community. So that message has gone out to everyone.
Okay, and I just want to also mention something that has been brought to my attention. I think we have to be careful about calling this homeschooling, because it's not really homeschooling. Homeschooling is a completely different entity. The teachers are doing above and beyond what is expected. It's distance learning. And I think we just have to all get familiar, myself included. You know, teaching your own child is a lot harder than teaching a room full of strangers, but these teachers are doing so much to go above and beyond. So I think we just, myself included, have to be a little bit more cautious about saying it's, it's homeschooling. Just a thought.
Anyone else have anything? I have to keep clicking back and forth, I can see all of you. The next, the next item is the minutes, Barbara, for for the meeting of February 25th. Should I just read it?
Uh, yeah, you can. We have the minutes there for approval. I believe everybody had them and had a chance to review them.
Motion?
Yeah, I'll move the minutes of February 25th, both budget regular and executive.
Hello.
Second. Second.
Terry?
Terry? Yes.
Okay, um, all those in favor? Well, you know what? On the minute? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Under President's message, I, I just want to reiterate how thankful I am to Dr. Anamon and the administrators, the teachers, and the support staff, because our district has gone above and beyond. I'm fortunate enough that I'm seeing grandchildren in the districts, and I can honestly tell you that we are ahead of the curve, and we're definitely thankful to Dr. Anamon and Mr. Novak and, and all the support staff, the administrators, everybody has gone above and beyond. So I just want to say thank you for keeping our students on track, and hopefully, when they come back, they'll be able to catch up fairly quickly. So that's just a big thank you from myself and the board too. Now we'll go into public comment. Public comments can be a little different tonight, I think. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes. Then time permitting, other public comments limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. People are, are asked, no, sorry, time limit transpires, period, are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded by the, by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that the members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comment made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Has anybody sent anything in? Mrs. Francis, like, is there any comments or?
We had one email that we received. Lori Byro, Hewitt, New Jersey. And in her email, she said, "Thank you for everything being done." Confused about why the high school continued with a school play on March 12th. I think the announcement came that day at 2:00 PM." That was the extent of her comments.
Okay, um, any other, is there a phone call or anything from anyone or?
No, not at this time. I'm not sure if you want to wait a minute or so.
I guess.
I'll check.
There's nobody here either at the board meeting at Westbrook.
I'm relieved to know that nobody's giving a drop in.
Yeah.
There are none. I'll move to close public comment.
Second.
Second.
Okay, those on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Terry, could you?
Sure.
I'm sorry, it's up to me, I'm sorry.
I'd like to move all the resolutions under education, um, I'm sorry, operations and finance and personnel.
Terry, I'm sorry, I missed both.
I'd like to move all the resolutions under education.
I have to do the consent agenda first, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I, I'd like to move the agenda as a consent agenda as presented, including the hand carries. There are two hand carries that you have. And I need a second for the motion.
I'll second that.
Dave? That is a voice for all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, Terry, if you could do the, the moving of the motions, please.
Okay, I'd like to move all the resolutions under education, personnel, and operations and finance for approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, Dave, second that. Any discussion on the motion? All the motions in the agenda. Ray, do you have something?
It's odd to do this, but I'd like to say thanks to Janine Stark for taking care of my boys while they were in MacIntyre. Sorry, hang on. Taking care of my boys and thousands of others in MacIntyre for all those years, so congratulations to Janine.
Terry?
Um, I'd like to thank Mrs. Sloan for her years of dedication to our district. She has been a teacher who has exemplified what being a role model truly is, and I thank her very much.
And anyone else? Okay, so if there's no other comments? Does somebody have a comment? Roll call, Francisco?
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Uh, yes to everything abstained from number 11 under operations and finance.
Mr. Oshinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes to all abstained on number 11 under operations and finance.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yeah.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain on number 11 under operations and finance, and yes to the rest. Okay, old business. Does anyone have anything for old business?
Can I just update the board, on the board, the budget? The budget was submitted to the county, and there were some questions. I had to make some clarifications. That was sent back down to them, and I'll send you an email. As soon as I get an approval, I'll send you all an email, so that you know that it's been approved. And that's just so that we can publish it in the newspaper for the public hearing. I did hear today that the districts that have April elections, those elections have been moved to March, May the 12th. So I'm not quite sure what's going to happen with ours, but I will keep you informed.
Yeah, the governor did announce that the other day. So we haven't heard if our, our budget submission's final date could maybe move further along the line.
Right, for the public hearing, so we don't know.
Any other old business? If not, I need a motion to close old business?
Make a motion to close old business?
I need a second? Poll? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Onto new business. Does anybody have anything under new business? Kate?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I should have said this after Dan's update, but I saw on social media that we donated a bunch of the science supplies, safety things, like gloves and things like that. Say that that is an amazing idea. Very much.
Okay, just to update everybody, Vice Majorsick and Mr. Kelly went around to MacIntyre High School Science Labs, and they found some supplies that would be better used in the medical, in the personal squad. So we pulled up the gloves, the masks, another item, the personal protection for the West Milford First State Squad. And we were donating today to the OEM.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody? Okay, I need a motion.
I'll move to close, old business, new business. New business.
All those in favor?
Aye.
They're going to the second part of, part of. Um, same, same, the same position, the same, the same side, because now you're in with the, now you're in. Other than on the. This portion, the portion, moving to members of the public, having a legitimate interest in the action of the to the purpose of addressing and any subject matter, through curtail and directly leading to the operation of the West Milford Public School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes. Then time permitting, other public comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker until the time period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register, which we can't right now anyway, if appropriate, and, and provide their name and address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that the members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in the light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Barbara, did anybody call this? Okay, so I need, I need a motion to close public comment.
I'll move to close public comment.
Second?
A second.
Okay, Mike? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? If not, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion at 7:29 to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Don't we have to vote on the?
Nope, we voted on everything, right?
Yeah, we're not going into executive session, that was the only thing left.
I thought we were doing the other thing separate. The HIBs, I thought. I thought it had to be separate, I misunderstood.
Should we, do we, we thought we could move it all together.
Yeah, the HIBs already been voted on. We only vote separately when we meet executive session, we vote afterwards, but we were all good tonight.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. I hope everyone stays safe, and hopefully, we'll be able to see each other again at some point in time.
Happy to everybody.
Take care of everyone.
Happy, happy. Take care.
Take care of them.
Have a good night. Stay healthy.
Night.
Night. Night.
Stay safe.